Good evening. Would everyone please rise?
For the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening mindful of the upcoming opening to the new school year. We ask that you bless each individual who will work with us, granting them the enthusiasm and dedication to children so necessary to help each child meet his or her full potential. Be with our administrators as they put the final touches on their preparation work this week. And Father, we ask a special blessing upon the young first-year teachers who are joining our ranks. Help us and help them to find their way early on and help us as we try to find the support they need to have a successful first year and for many, first job. These things we ask in your name.
Mr. Warner, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a verdict and justice for all.
Rule call, please, Ms. Votchay.
Ms. Essevedo?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Egan?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Lemoine?
Here.
Mr. England?
Here.
Mr. Long is not with us.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. White?
I mean, Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Okay, first item on our agenda tonight is the Communication Report, the recognition of Annalise Cesar Tedesco, the 2020 Louisiana Department of Education Teacher of the Year. Annalise, would you come up, please? And Ms. Pritchard, would you come up also, please?
Hi.
Thank you.
Are you going to do the communications report first?
Do you want to do the communications report first, or we can recognize Annalise first? Okay, thank you. Okay, Annalise, what can we say? On behalf of the St. Bernard Parish School Board, we are just so happy and thrilled for you, your entire family. I know tonight you have your husband, Trent Tedesco, your father, Charles Cesar, your mom, who is watching, I know, at home, Pam Cesar, who is so proud of you also, and your sister, Arianna Cesar. Well, her last name's not Cesar anymore.
Cruz.
Cruz, because she's married also. But on behalf of the Board, we want to congratulate you and we want to just say thank you for all that you do for the St. Bernard Parish school system to be recognized as not only our parish winner, but our state winner. And I was privileged and honored to be when they announced you as a winner, and I know Ms. Votchay and Mr. England were there also. And it was just so exciting and thrilling and so well, so well-deserved to you. And we're just very, very happy and proud of you. It's been wonderful also to watch you grow in your youth and being in our system and being such a role model and then becoming such a wonderful teacher. And we are very blessed to have you in our system. So congratulations on behalf of the Board. And we want to present this to you. And it says, "A Certificate of Recognition. The St. Bernard Parish School Board hereby presents Annalise Cesar Tedesco with this certificate in honor of your extraordinary contribution to education. 2022 Louisiana Teacher of the Year awarded this 27th day of July 2021." Congratulations. And if you would come around, the Board would like to congratulate you.
Thank you all so much.
Just stay there one minute, please. Anyone want to say anything? Mr. England?
I just want to say, you shine. And you shine bright. And what happens there, you make our school system shine. And we really want to thank you for that. And keep it up.
It's my pleasure. Thank you. Thank you all so much.
Thank you for staying. One moment, please. Okay, Ms. Lemoine?
Just again, congratulations. And I just wanted to say, you know, your service to the school system extends so far beyond just your classroom. The hours, the days, the amount of time that you've given to the entire district to share your time and talents with all of the arts programs and give our students that opportunity, like Mr. England said, to shine. Thank you so much for all that you do, and we're so incredibly proud of you. You are so incredibly deserving of this honor. So thank you so much and congrats.
Thank you. Any other Board members?
Ms. Votchay? Okay. This one holds a very special spot in my heart. You know, I go back many, many years. I taught math with her mother at Shellman High School many, many moons ago, before she was even married to Annalise's father, who taught social studies at that time. I attended their wedding, so I knew Annalise even before she was born. And I knew her from the womb. And then as she entered our school system as a very young child and saw the brightness and the potential, and she starred in every one of our plays as a student from the age of five on up and all the opportunities that she had. And I think, as I told them the other night, when I finally do retire at whatever little function we have for my retirement, I hope that I've asked Annalise and there's another Assistant Principal at Shellman High School, Will Schneider, who, when they were both students at Shellman High, starred in My Fair Lady as Professor Higgins. And of course, Annalise had the starring role, and I want them to reprise one of those numbers. So we have watched her grow. But most importantly, as a young educator in her own right, she has given so, so many opportunities to our students. And they take them, they take our students from elementary through middle school through high school in our performing arts program. And once they reach that particular level, our high school kids mentor our middle and elementary school students. Annalise has taken our kids all over the country for workshops and tryouts for college. So many of our students are getting music and vocal and instrumental music scholarships to many of the universities, not only in Louisiana, but throughout the country. So she has done an absolutely magnificent job. And I can't stop without recognizing her sister, Arianna. They're sort of the partners in crime here. And they together make a fantastic couple in providing opportunities for our children. And if you've read any of the information, you know, our kids have performed outstanding in the Donald Cook operatic competition where we were the only school, I mean, we were what, second in OKA? Maybe second in OKA. First round, we had more. Make the finalists in those competitions. So our kids have performed everywhere, and then Annalise also performs in her own right as well. So the kids can look up to her, not only as a teacher, a mentor, but a performer as well. So we're very blessed and lucky to have Annalise, her sister Arianna, and the entire Cesar family being at the helm of our performing arts program, not only at Shellman High School, but the whole feeder system, elementary through middle and high school. So thank you. Thank you, Charles, and Pam, and Arianna, for everything that you do for our kids and for our school system and for this community.
Thank you so much.
I get emotional when I talk about it. Would you like to say something else?
Just that it is, it has been such a privilege to grow up here in St. Bernard Parish and to be a product of our very own St. Bernard Parish public schools and to be a product of the programs that my father has created and to share that journey with my family, as you've said, Arianna, my mom, and my dad, Pam and Charles. It's been very special. And it has been so wonderful to grow into this position with so many of the wonderful teachers that I had, teaching as colleagues, you know, and then retiring in joy and such. But just to give such a warm thank you to the many School Board members that have served in this room, certainly today and in the years that have come before, that have supported our efforts as teachers, supported our efforts in the arts. And a special thank you to our students because they are truly the inspiration for why we do what we do. So many, many thanks to all of you, to all of them, and to my family. And I hope that we will get to do more together. Thank you.
And I just wanted to mention, I watched, Annalise was featured on the, what, Sunday Morning Journal?
Yes, WBRZ Channel 2.
In Baton Rouge. The whole 30 minutes. And she gave a fantastic interview and performance with Mr. Pastrick, John Pastrick, who is the show, the moderator of the show, I guess. And you represented us extremely well.
Thank you.
Did a great job. And I think we posted that on Facebook, haven't we, Lexi? In case anybody wants to watch her interview and that from last Sunday Morning's Journal from the Baton Rouge station.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Votchay. Okay, Ms. Pritchard, for the rest of the communication report.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much. I'm excited to be here. This is my first time up here. Our communications updates today directly reflect the amazing news that we received as a district just a little while ago. We have provided for all of you our press release that went out to all of our local media as well as our state media. As Ms. Votchay just mentioned, Annalise was recently featured on the Sunday Journal. She has a lot of media inquiries coming in, and there will be many more features of her. And so we are so very thankful for the work that she has done. I did want to mention that St. Bernard Parish is the only school system in Louisiana who has had two State Teacher of the Years in a three-year span. And so it is very much a testament to all the work that's being done here. And so, again, congratulations, Annalise. And so we look forward to learning more and being with her for her journey. Just to give you a little update, she will now be going, submitting her application for the National Teacher of the Year. We'll work alongside with her, and October 31st is when that application is due. And so we'll keep you updated on that process, but she has a lot of work ahead of her, and we know that she's going to do great things. Hopefully, you have seen, we're in the process of updating our websites for the district. And so some of them have rolled over. The rest will be rolled over by the start of school next week when our students come to school. And so we'll be able to provide you with analytics for those next time we meet. We do an additional update, which I'll go into more detail next week. We have a Twitter account now, so we're expanding. Now we have Facebook, and we're slowly starting to grow our following on Twitter. Other than that, we're very much looking forward to back to school, and we'll give you additional updates for our August super news. That's all that I have today.
Thank you, Ms. Pritchard. And on behalf of the Board, we want to say welcome to you.
I greatly appreciate it.
As I'm the Communications Coordinator, and we thank you for coming in with a seamless approach and doing a great job. So thank you very much.
I greatly appreciate it. Thank you. I'm very thankful. I'm so happy. And I hope that I can do a good job. I know that Alex is irreplaceable, and I'm very thankful that I have her support. But I'm very grateful to y'all, and I'm looking forward to many years to come, hopefully.
Thank you. And Alex Schneider did do a wonderful job also, and we appreciated all her service for those many years. And we have Mr. Warner, he had a comment.
Hi, Mrs. Pritchard. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
The website, do you have a timeline on when, as it moves along, when is it going to be finished?
Most of our schools have transferred over as of today. All of them will be up and running with their new template by the start of school next Friday.
Okay, great. I'd love to see, once it gets completed as an agenda item, maybe you can come back and kind of surf it for us and show us, show the public the new website and some of them.
Would love to.
Click through it for us.
Yes.
I'd appreciate that.
It would be my pleasure, absolutely.
Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you very much. Next item is an incorporation of the General Committee meeting minutes of July 13, 2021, into the minutes of the July 27, 2021 regular monthly meeting. There's a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Next item, or personnel changes, the review of personnel changes for July 2021 and consideration for approval of leaves without pay. And in your folder before you, those items that are highlighted are the new recommendations of personnel changes since the committee meeting. And while you were perusing the list at this time, I just want to recognize again, Ms. Denise Sanchez, who was a teacher with us for many, many years, and her last position was at Davies Elementary. Denise, congratulations, and we thank you for your many wonderful years of service of teaching and love for our students. And also, we have Ms. Joyce Bayhigh from Mero Elementary. And Ms. Bayhigh, we want to thank you and congratulate you on your retirement. And happy retirement to both of you. Mr. England?
Yeah. Ms. Votchay, what about our teacher, our staff? Are we fully staffed for next week? We start next week.
Not quite. We have a, I know that. We have a couple of openings. If anybody out there is aware of a certified math or English teacher, we would be happy to have you contact us. We have a couple that we're waiting to interview and a couple of openings. So we hope to be fully staffed.
Right. What about bus drivers in that?
We're okay in that respect. We can always use more in terms of bus drivers. And as you well know, we will train anyone who wishes to be a bus driver, because we are a certified facility to do that and to help them obtain a CDL license with air brakes endorsement that they need in order to drive a school bus. And anyone interested in that, please contact us, and we're always looking for potential good bus drivers.
Right. That's great. We can always use some good bus drivers. And as far as all the buses, are they air-conditioned for our kids?
Every one of our buses is air-conditioned, right. So that's one hurdle that we completed a couple of years ago.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Warner.
All right. Okay, Mr. Smith? Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Smith. Is there a second, second by Ms. Essevedo? Okay, any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Next item is the adoption of the 2021-2026 Long-Term Strategic Plan. There was a recommendation by the committee. Ms. Lametta, you want to come up? Thank you. Okay, is there a motion on the floor at the time? Okay, motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Okay. Any questions or comments for Ms. Lametta? And we did review this and go over it at the committee meeting. Good evening.
I have a question.
Ms. Essevedo?
Can I abstain? I wasn't here at the last meeting, and I wasn't getting any presentation.
You have that right?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, that was difficult, huh, Ms. Lamatta?
The best one I've had yet. Of all the times I've been up here.
Thank you for the long strategic plan. We appreciate it and all of your efforts and working on that. Okay, so at this time, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Please cast your votes.
Ms. Essevedo, you got to take all right. Motion passes 9-4, one extension.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the transportation routes for 2021-2022. And there was a recommendation by the committee. Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. White. Just a clarification, Ms. Votchay, these, the bus routes are basically the same routes as last year, correct?
Primarily. There may be a couple of changes in stops, depending on where the students live. But as always, we begin the year with these bus routes. You have the times listed, how they travel as we pick up the students the first couple of weeks. We'll make sure that we have the stops all in the right places and the numbers of children on the bus being balanced. So we'll do that usually within the first two weeks. But as it stands now, and these are on the website, they've been sent home by the schools to the parents, and they can be accessed to by clicking on the website. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Are there any other questions or comments at this time? Okay, all in favor of the motion on the floor? Go ahead and cast your votes, please.
Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you. Next item is an approval of RIS services of Louisiana for the renewal of student and athletic insurance for the period of August 1, 2021, through July 31, 2022, at a cost of $40,097.52. There was a recommendation by the committee. There's a motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Mr. England. Any discussion or questions at this time? Okay. There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you. Next item is an approval of the Industrial Tax Exemption Application, number 20210277. There was a recommendation by the committee. There's a motion by Mr. Smith. This is seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Any discussion? Mr. Egan? No?
I was scratching my head.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion or questions? And I know we have several representatives from Shellman Refining here with us tonight. Thank you for being here. Okay. There being no questions, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine yeses and one no.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next item is an update on the 2021-2022 Return to School Guidance. Ms. Votchay?
Okay. We have updated and placed on the website the initial return to school guidance. Many of the measures we have in place in the guidelines are those that we ended the school year with, with some additions and changes. We have had guidance from the Department of Education, from the Louisiana Department of Public Health, from the CDC. And I guess the most controversial piece to all of this is the masking. And at this point, it is strongly recommended and encouraged that when indoors, that all people, that we all wear masks beginning when we open the school year. It is not yet a mandate, and we're going to follow those guidelines, and that's what we're proposing to do, and monitor the situation daily because, as we know, things are changing as we speak each and every day. If you go through the guidance, which everyone has had, it's posted on the website, I'm just going to maybe highlight a few things and then open it to any questions or discussion that anyone would have. Riding the school bus, everyone is mandated to wear a mask. That is a federal executive order. It is coming down in all public transportation throughout the United States. You see that in the news with air travel, train travel, bus travel. And school buses are under the umbrella of public transportation. So there is no choice in the matter. It is a federal directive and executive order. So all students, regardless of age and drivers and anyone who rides on our school buses, must wear a mask. So we have sent out that information, you know, to our parents and employees and such. So that is non-negotiable at this point, not even something for us to consider in terms of changing in any way at this time today, tonight. Masking in other aspects, outdoors, it's not a problem whatsoever. Indoors, the recommendation is to wear the masks. But it is not, as I've said, at least right so far, not a mandate. So we are beginning at this point tonight through this document, strongly recommending and strongly encouraging that masks be worn and have stopped short of making that a mandate. We will not be taking temperatures as students enter the building. We are asking parents and employees to make sure that that is done prior to their arrival. And if a child or an employee is sick in any way, to stay home. All of the other measures that we have in place and that we had in place last year, we still will do. We have the protective gear, we've got the hand sanitizers, we have the bottle, you know, water bottle filling stations in the schools. So none of that will change. So that's going to be available to all of our students and all of our employees in all of our buildings and in all of our classrooms. So the protective measures that we had in place and the social distancing will be done to the greatest extent possible within the classrooms and the cafeterias. The students will be able to eat in the cafeteria this year, as of today, so far, as of today, instead of bringing it to the classrooms. We will have extracurricular activities. And again, as of tonight, as of today, we will have. Now, we will not, you know, we are going to take a really strong look at any type of field trips or anything like that. That is still going to be done in a very modified way. So that's not going to be open. We will ask people coming into the building, visitors must make appointments. So we're not going to have an open-door policy at the school. So we're still going to keep into effect the mandate that as people wish to come into the building, even parents or whatever, to make the appointments to come in, and probably we'll ask all visitors at that point to mask as well. will ask all visitors at that point to mask as well. So with that, we're not going to see much change within the building. Now, the guidance in terms of if people are testing positive and close contacts is all coming down from the CDC and the Department of Public Health. And we know that as of right now, if someone is testing positive, and we know that's going to happen. It's going to happen among our students and it's going to happen among our employees. It's happening among the community members as we speak. So those guidelines are basically the same with a minor change, same as we had last year. If anyone tests positive for COVID, there is at least, you know, 10 days where they've got to remain home and isolate and be symptom-free within the last 24 hours before they return. If they're, if they are in close contact, the new guidance is to ask a close contact to test immediately. If you are already vaccinated or have had COVID within the 90 days prior to that time, you can return immediately with that negative test and monitor those. If you're unvaccinated, you must wait 10 and 5 to 7 days, retest again, and on the eighth day with the test, you can return. If you choose not to test, it'll be a 10-day quarantine period. So all of those regulations for quarantining, they're spelled out in these documents and you can go onto the CDC and the LDH websites as well because that particular guidance comes straight from those websites. So the recommendation right now that is coming down from DOE and LDH is to strongly recommend and encourage all indoor masking and to keep these particular protective measures in place that we have already had. So that's our recommendation at this time tonight, realizing it may change tomorrow or the next day or next week or right before we open, as it progresses. And I do want to say, you know, and from a personal perspective, I would really encourage everyone out there to get vaccinated if you're eligible. It protects you, it protects the people around you, it protects the families, it protects our children, and it protects our fellow employees. And we're seeing a lot of spread within this community as well as within the state of Louisiana and out into the rest of the country. And I firmly believe that if we're going to get a handle on this, that each individual community has to make that type of a commitment. Because we don't live in isolation by ourselves somewhere up on a mountain or in the forest somewhere. We live within a community and have, and I hate, I shouldn't be pontificating, but I think we have a responsibility to those within the community in which we live. But having said that, it is a personal choice, but we would strongly recommend that. And as more people test positive or we have more close contacts, there may be some differentiation in terms of what those outcomes would be, how we handle those situations. If we have an outbreak in any particular school as defined by what the LDH, you know, Department of Public Health, then I, in consultation with the medical director for this region, will make the decision in terms of whether or not we will close a particular facility. We didn't have to do that at all last year. It worked out to, well, we never had to close a school because the cases were isolated enough and they were not clustered or congregated within any particular classroom or cluster within a school. At our elementary schools in the lower grades, we're going to maintain the static groups so that the children are not going to be mingling period by period. We know that that's impossible at the upper levels, at the high school level and such. So you're expecting, I think we should expect more people at, our older students, to have more positive tests when it comes to COVID. And we'll have to deal with those as the year progresses and see how we handle each individual case and situation.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Mr. Warner?
Yeah. Ms. Votchay, do we have a cleaning crew in place like we had previously? You know, had crews that would come in, wipe down classrooms?
Yes, we do. And what we do, the protocol that we've used is every week at every one of our facilities, we do a massive cleaning after school, disinfect and spray, the whole bit. Twice daily in every classroom, in every area of the building, we have the wipe downs and the disinfecting. Door handles, surfaces that are highly touched, bathroom areas, those are cleaned and disinfected at least twice during the day by the custodial crew. In individual classrooms, teachers have access to all of the materials that they need in terms of disinfectants and such. In our buses, after each one of their runs, we have those, got those little spray packs and such that each one of our bus drivers then goes along and does the disinfecting of each bus after, you know, the morning run and then the afternoon runs. So all of those protocols remain in place. So we do do a deep cleaning at least once a week in the school. We do it every day, the normal cleaning. And if we do have a positive case, then we bring in that crew again, that same day.
So Mr. Dewey is going to be busy again this year.
He's very busy. And I talked with him today. We have a couple hundred thousand masks. We've got all of the protective, the disinfectants, the protective gear that we need. So we are ready to go. We've got, like I said, the water bo, all of the water fountains are turned off. So there are no shared water fountains in the buildings, just like last year. And we've got them converted, many of them converted into the water bottle filling stations so kids can bring their water bottles and fill them at will.
One more thing. You know, you did such a great job with vaccinating our teachers and our staff last year through the Methodist Foundation. Is there any way that, you know, through that partnership, we could have a day where if students possibly that are of age that want to get vaccinated, we can make it available to them and our additional staff that may not have gotten vaccinated, we try to make that available to them? Is that a possibility?
That's a definite possibility. It's not only a possibility, we are pursuing that. I talked with, I've taught, I've had many conversations with Heather Serkoff, who runs the Methodist Foundation School-Based Health Clinics for us here and with Kim Keen through Ochsner, and they're both willing to do those. We've got it set up for any of our employees who are either new to us this year, who have not gotten vaccinated and who wish to do so. And we're going to make it available to students as well. And we have that school-based health clinic right there at Shellment High School. So it's going to be easy to administer those, you know, on a regular basis at the school as long as we have the appropriate parental consent to do so and that the parents want them done. And we will make also appropriate accommodations for our middle school students who are eligible as long as the parents wish to do so and have given their consent.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? Since this is a guidance, do we need a motion to accept it or?
You can. I mean, it's the guidance that we have with some of those modifications. You can make the motion to accept it and realize, you know, that y'all have already given me that emergency authority. So if I have to make changes in this based upon new guidance and new recommendations, then I'll be able to do so without coming back at a formal meeting.
Okay. Mr. England makes the motion to accept the new return to school guidance?
Right. With adjustments from Ms. Votchay and decisions.
And giving Ms.
Discretion.
Right. Okay. And giving Ms. Votchay the right to authorize any changes.
Any changes.
And I will definitely inform y'all if we feel we need to do that.
Okay. So there's a motion by Mr. England, seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Any discussion, further discussion? Okay. And we just ask for the cooperation of everyone to please mask up. To, yes. Get your shots if you can and be eligible and just for the safety, as Ms. Votchay said, of our whole school community and our community as a whole. Okay. Anyone else or any comments? Okay. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Okay. All right. Next item or items to be placed on the next committee meeting agenda. Anyone?
I have the one from Mr. Warner that I put down about the perusal of the new website.
Okay.
So I'll add that.
And Ms. Votchay, if we could get an update on enrollment numbers?
Yes. Well, usually we wait.
Till October 1st, yeah.
Well, even the end of August or beginning of September, once we get all of the students in. So it won't be the first meeting in August because we'll still be, we'll still be having our four-year-olds and our five-year-olds coming in. So maybe at the last August meeting.
The regular monthly meeting.
Yes.
Okay. All righty. And just a quick question, Ms. Votchay, are we still going to have the, the assembly before school begins? Or are we going to try to do that?
Yes. We are. In fact, we're doing a lot of the filming right now and getting the program ready. So I was going to mention that. It, you know, we, our teachers, actually our, all summer, we've been doing professional development with the teachers. The beginning of July, we started the Teach St. Bernard Certification Program. So they've been doing that all month. Yesterday, our new teachers, teachers new to the parish came for the first day. They're here this week. So I welcomed them yesterday morning and they're going through a lot of new teacher in-service and they'll be with us at the training center and then at their individual schools later in the week. All of our teachers arrive Monday, August 2nd. So this coming Monday. I know it's crazy, transurface. And students, their first day will be Friday, August 6th. So things are moving along rapidly here. Seems like there are no summers anymore. And as you well know, summers are our busiest time.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay.
Well, at least for the central office people, it's our busiest time.
Yes.
I wouldn't, principals, I'm sure, would disagree with me on that. When the students arrive, is their busiest time.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Okay. Anyone else for items on the next committee meeting agenda? Okay. Superintendent's recommendations, any additional?
Nothing additional. I think we covered everything that we had to already.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Esseveta. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. The meeting's now adjourned. Thank you and good night.